So today's Tuesday, 5:30 PM. We're having a study session with Plant Moran on the water and sewer rate analysis. Go ahead, Martin.
Thank you for having me this evening for the water and sewer rate analysis. I was gonna share my screen if I can. If that's okay.
You should, I think I already made you co-host. You should be good.
So let me do that. You'll see the template that shows cash available on screen for those that are viewing online. So overall, the water and sewer agreed upon procedures. It's a report that we issue. There's a letter that's also provided to the council. The letter does inform just overall the procedures that we've performed. And what it basically, in summary, what it is, is it's information that we obtained from the city, from the county, from various sources, and make sure that everything agrees with that template that I'm sharing on screen. Essentially, we're making sure that the numbers that you have, not only as of June 30, 2021, the starting point from the audited financial statements, that the projections will follow based on information that you've received from, for example, how much is the water gonna cost, excuse me, over the next few years? So we get the information from DUA in order to see, okay, how much is the water supposed to be increased every single year? We look at the information from the city, engineering, as well as Wade Trim, to see, okay, how much will you need to spend, capital expenditures, over the next few years? And all that information is summarized. The letter summarizes the information that we did, or like the procedures that we've performed. It also provides an overall summary of what the average expected water and sewer rate increase would be over the next year, if you were to approve this budget for this coming year, as well as future years. So with that, let me go through the template that shows the cash available. So that's the thicker of the documents. It's a 15-page document. The model is based off of your cash needs within the Water and Sewer Fund, just like in the past. The city is very forward-thinking, forward-looking, as you have been over the last few years. So it's always looking at the next five years. What's gonna happen? What are our cash needs in the next five years? So at the very top of this page, it shows the overall cash that you have currently in Water and Sewer Fund. The very top line shows $37 million in cash. I will explain momentarily why that balance is so high. And then at the very bottom, it shows a calculation of how much money do you really need to run the Water and Sewer Department? And then the minimum balance, essentially, at the very bottom, shows that you need about approximately $6.9 million at any point in time to have a relatively healthy Water and Sewer Fund. The reason that dollar mounted, the dollar amount does seem pretty high, I would say in general, like if I had that kind of money in my bank account, I'd probably be living on a beach somewhere right now. But the Water and Sewer Fund is a very big department. You have a very big city. You have very, like you have old infrastructure throughout many areas. So you do need a certain amount of capital, a certain amount of money, to keep the Water and Sewer Fund healthy. The beginning calculation shows that you essentially need 90 days of operating expenses at any point in time to pay your current expenses. So that's payroll primarily, just overall utilities, certain things that are just due at any point in time within the Water and Sewer Fund. The reason you need that cash, you can't wait for collection of water and sewer bills to come in and then finally be able to make your payroll. You have to have a minimum balance of cash at any point in time. So that comes out to about 4.1, 4.2 million.
Okay, Martin?
Yes?
So I'm gonna allow for council members, I'm allowed for questions during the session, instead of waiting towards the end. But let's just keep in mind, we have about an hour of this, so keep that in perspective so we don't have way too many questions. The reason, what is the reasoning behind, I mean, I know you kinda mentioned it, but it still seems like a large amount, $7 million in reserves. I mean, it sounds like a high, high amount. This is, we're talking about almost 20% of our budget.
Yeah, so it is high. So one is the $4 million of any, at any point in time, your overall operating expenses you need. Because you need to make sure that, again, you have to meet your payroll, you can pay your vendors, and so on. The other, there's another percentage that's calculated. It's basically for emergency replacement, for capital, for water and sewer mains breaking, for, because you do, again, have an aging system. That's calculated based on your overall net book value of your capital assets, which is about $100 million. And it's about 2.25% of that balance. So it's another $2.2 million. So you have that money just in case water and sewer mains break. And as you know, that does happen quite often, and it's very expensive to fix.
Okay. During the study sessions, I'm gonna allow you guys to just, so we can save on time. You don't have to get permission, just go ahead, but I may stop you, but you can just go ahead and ask the questions.
Awesome. Martin, I got a quick question for you. Thank you so much. When you say, you know, having the $6.9 or the $7 million in reserves, when you say that we're supposed to have that, is that a, is that a law? Is it federally regulated? Or is you just saying, hey, to be on the safe side, let's put $7 million in reserves on the side in case of, you know, the very aging infrastructure that we have?
It's a best, best practice. So there's no law.
It's our best practice.
Best practice is definitely to have 90 days of operating cash, so that 4.1, 4.2 million, that's best practice. Best practice for emergency replacement, for water and sewer mains, and so on. That is very common, to have that 2, 2.5%. Some committees have a higher percentage, some committees can't, and they'll have a smaller percentage. It's completely up to the city to decide what that percentage is.
My last question, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Of that $7 million, have, and if we've held that every year, $7 million, how often do we use that actual $7 million? So let's just say it's that $7 million, we used $2 million. Do we go back and add another additional $2 million to keep it close to the $7 million? Do we have any history in the last 20 years to show, hey, every year we've had to use $6 million, so that's where we're keeping $6 million? Or we're just putting it there because we're, like you said, aging infrastructure? Because in the last 25 years, if we haven't needed to ever use the $7 million, we can, you know, allocate it elsewhere, and that's just food for thought?
Yep. So it's, to be honest, it's not like a reserve that you use per se. It's a minimum cash balance that you should have in order to be able to meet your expenses. So it's kinda like, if you had a certain amount in your checking account, you need so much for mortgage payment, insurance, you know, utilities, groceries, and so on. So you know that, let's just say it's $2,000 or $3,000 minimum that you have to have per month. Because if you fall under that, you're probably not making the next payment.
So what part of it is reserves, then?
This is a perfect example of that. So that $7 million, or $6.9 million, is to make sure that you can make your payments without needing to borrow more money from the bank or something to make sure that you can.
So what amount, then, would be actual reserves, reserves, which is typically not accounted for? In other words, you're saying four million is gonna go towards payments and what have you. What amount is liquid funds that are just pretty much?
The full amount. So the full amount is liquid funds that you're just using in operations. It is not set aside in a separate fund balance, or a separate checking account, or anything like that. It's just the bare minimum, so that way you can make sure that you're staying above that red line, that you're not drowning.
Okay.
That's the $37 million?
So the $37 million is actually how much cash you do have.
In the waterfront.
In the waterfront at the end of June.
So my question is, how come, Martin, most of these numbers, it says, "unaudited"? Are we supposed to audit this, or?
So the reason it says "unaudited" is because this was finalized at the time that, right before the audit was finalized. But the numbers are, match exactly to the audited numbers.
So are these?
But since this was finalized before we did our last council meeting, and it wasn't fully approved and uploaded to the state, I couldn't say that we were fully audited. But the numbers do match exactly to your financial statements.
So are you gonna provide something that'll show that's gonna be fully audited?
I can send a message and like, just let you know that they have been audited, or I can update this and say that audited. But they are fully audited numbers, because now I know that those have been, that have been issued.
Yeah, something just in writing, I think, just for.
We can definitely do that.
Just closure.
Martin?
Oh, go ahead, you don't need permission.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that the councilman is, is done.
No, I'm not. We have $37,590,000. Now, is the reserves you want come out of that 37? Okay, so how often do we go through this 37, 590, 890?
So that 37 that you have right now in cash, the minimum that you should have is the 6.9 million.
So we're pretty overfunded right now.
And it's because of the debt issuance that you had. The 2021 capital bonds that were issued.
Are included in.
This is, that's exactly why the cash balance is so high.
So there's $24 million, in other words, let's take $24 million off of that.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so we're looking at, what, $13 million?
So you'd have a lot less, yes.
Yeah, so $13 million, so we, our reserves is half of what we really have.
It's a lot less. And so, in the very first bolded number, the $42 million that you see.
Yes.
That comes out to be, how much funds do you really have? And the reason that number is different than your cash, so we start out with cash, and we say, okay, we're gonna collect receivables, because you have all the water and sewer bills that haven't been collected, that's another $8 million. Then you have payables, you have to pay vendors, another $3 million, that's taken away from that. Essentially, you end up at $42 million. The next year, the projection is, and I'll show that where that number's coming from, you're expecting to use up $21 million of that $42 million in the next fiscal year that we're already in.
What do you say $21 million?
So you're gonna end up with $20 million, roughly.
How, how did you come about with what we're gonna use?
I'll show that calculation momentarily.
Okay.
The next year, you're actually gonna use another $16 million. So in, at the end of 2023, June 30, 2023, you're gonna have $3.7 million of overall cash. So you're actually $3 million short of that bogey that you're trying to strive for, so that way the fund remains healthy. So that would be my one caution to observe. It's nothing that necessarily I would like, jump into immediately, because we're already six months into the year. And you'll see where things shake out at the end of the year, but things may need to be adjusted in the future years, to make sure you don't fall too low, so that way you can make sure that your payroll's paid, vendors are paid, et cetera. But at the end of the five-year period, based on this calculation, you will be at that 6.9 million that you should have in order to keep the fund healthy. So with that, let me go in, into the biggest drivers of this model. So page two through four shows various assumptions made in the model. Many of which are, how much is the water gonna cost? You know, from, you know, when we purchased it. How much is the sewage gonna cost? How much, you know, certain like repairs and things like that? Most of those items are inflationary increases. Water increases are about 4% per year. That's the cost that's projected. However, the biggest driver in this model is your capital outlay. So the 2021 capital improvement bonds were issued for a certain purpose. The CSOs, as well as your water meters. That's gonna consume a big part of your budget, and that's why that huge decrease over the next 24 months in this model from your cash. In order to see the details of the fixed assets, it's on the very last page, page 15, in the appendix. So this information was received from the city, as well as Wade Trim.
Martin, give me one second, I'm sorry.
No problem. It's the very last page in this document.
The appendix, right?
The appendix, yes. So these numbers are given by year of how much you're planning on potentially spending from the Water and Sewer Fund. The very first column is items that have been approved in last year's budget that haven't been actually spent yet, because whether there were delays, or whatever happened. So those, that money hasn't been spent. That's a total of $12 million at the very bottom, $12,185,000. So that's, so that's made up of the Highland and Ann Arbor Trail, the 2.2 million. Then you have the Virgil Avenue and Joy Road, $880,000. And then you have CSO L42, $9 million. So that money has not been spent, as you know. So that's already kinda on hold, and that's built into the model. Then, future years, 2022, you can see the breakdown of all the capital outlay that's projected, as well as future years. So all those numbers are clearly pretty significant. And they'll end up appearing in the charts, in the, in the presentation on page seven. So that's, the page seven shows all the expenses in Department 537 and Water and Sewer Fund, which includes all your capital outlay.
Martin, excuse me. On page 15, we have the future CDB, CDVG water main projects. Doesn't that come from the federal government, or is that still tax, I mean, the city's responsibility?
So it's, so you'll have revenue coming in, in the model, as well as an expense. So it shows the two spots. So whatever grants you end up receiving, those will offset some of these costs. A lot of times, it's not 100% of the cost, but it does offset.
So you show, you show it in what we need, and then when we receive money, that's going just to help us out?
Then it shows as revenue as well.
Okay.
Martin, I have a question for you. I know, I know over the years, one of the concerns that you've had has been about water loss. And, and I know that in '21, your projections are 11.15%.
Yeah, I was gonna bring.
That's pretty high. And I remember you addressing that, with the new water meters, where do you project, once those are put in, that percentage will be at? Because I know, you know, 11 and some percent is pretty high. Water loss that we don't get no money back for. We pay for it.
Yeah.
And it's lost through cracks in the system, et cetera, et cetera. And at the end of the day, all the residents obviously end up paying for it. What's your projections at this particular point, with the new water meters, as to what that percentage will probably go down to? And is that enough of a fix, or is there more fixes needed? Major fixes, that is?
So it's.
You always, I remember you saying, I'm sorry to interrupt, I remember you saying a few years back, that no matter what, you're always gonna have, obviously, water loss. You're always gonna have a percentage. So another thing I'd like you to address is, what is ideal?
Yeah, so I'm definitely far from an engineer, so I'm not gonna, I can't wear that hat. However, based on discussions with the city, with Wade Trim, the number should go down with new water meters, because the water meters, the older they become, the more off they are, and it's usually, they're not measuring enough of usage. So that number should go down. My understanding, based on the discussions, should be somewhere in the single digits. Is it 9%? Is it 5%? I don't know.
And what is it, what is it with, so one way you could project is, if you had, obviously, a brand-new infrastructure, that is, with new cities, you know, cities are relatively, you know, new, you know, hypothetically, Canton, et cetera, et cetera, or Brownstown.
Yep.
What is the percentages there as far as water loss? Because I know there's always gonna be a water loss. The issue is what percent? Where is it in the more ideal cities, where there's a lot less older infrastructure, like we have here?
Yeah, so like, looking at something like Canton, I don't know offhand. We at Plant Moran do audit that township, but I, I don't participate in audit. I would expect probably between like 4% and 6% somewhere in that range.
Thank you. Councilman, you have a question?
The thing is, I do wanna add too, is it's not just the infrastructure that's aging that causes water loss. You also have, you know, house fires, that, you know, so that's a component. There's also water theft. So people, you know, try and bypass the water meters, one way or another. So there's many different ways. Of course, water main breaks, but that's usually associated with older.
But I want you to, if you don't mind, repeating that statement, because I'm aware of it. Because people always mention about, you know, the meters are older, and that's why they're paying a lot of water bills, high water bills. And you mentioned a statement, I've heard it in the past, so if you don't mind repeating it for other residents, that with these, or maybe I'm repeating it, I guess, kind of, with these older water meters, if anything, because I've heard it from DPW also, and from the water department, if anything, it undercharges the residents, not overcharges, based on the fact that they're older meters. So with the newer meters, it can be a little bit more accurate, obviously, account.
It'll be accurate. So my understanding on the water meters, and again, I'm not an engineer, but my understanding with, speaking with a lot of municipalities, is the older the water meter, the slower it.
Right.
Registers. So if you use 1,000 units, it might register that you only use 990 or something.
Right.
I don't know what the numbers are, but.
Right. Thank you. Just go ahead with the questions.
You kinda answered the question, though, but the water main breaks, I don't know if Allee could chime in. But what percentage of the, you know, say, say if we lose, you know, 13% loss, what part of that would be water main breaks? Is it the half, or?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the exact number, and I don't know.
I know they, sometimes they have to let it run for so long, they wait for DTE to come out and mark their lines. So that, sometimes it runs for days.
Right. So when you, obviously, when you have a water main break, you're not measuring the amount of water that's, that's lost. But it is safe to say that, less than half. I think the issue we have is that most of our water losses, the 11% that we're talking about, are due not just to the meters. It's a small percentage of the meters. It's mostly the infrastructure. As we replace more of the older pipes, that's where the unknown breaks and leaks are. I mean, we have an old infrastructure. And we're just, so we, when we address them, we put a categories on them. So we, the older, the ones, the troubled locations are being replaced first. So that, combined with the new meters, which, by the way, are smart meters, so they detect unknown flow and warn us on it. So we should be able to reduce that percentage loss quite a bit, between the two.
So the new, you think the new meters are going to decrease the loss substantially, just because of the meters themselves?
Because they detect, they detect a flow, unusual flow. So the part of the specifications we put for the new meters, similar to what DTE's doing, they actually have smart meters, they actually send signals and detect unusual consumption. So it'd be a pattern produced for each location, and that pattern will follow. So any deviation from that pattern, down or up, so down meaning someone is bypassing the meter, or up meaning you have unusual losses, will be reported immediately to a collector's. So we have wireless collectors, all part of the specification score. We, we should be able to improve that number quite a bit.
Thank you, Al.
One, one more thing. Either one of you might be asked.
Oh, you may wanna come a little closer to the microphone, because you're coming in muffled.
Okay. The lead service line replacement, it, we budget it's every year for $125.
Yes, sir.
Did we, did we exceed that this past year?
No.
No?
We didn't, but again, we didn't investigate all the locations. So a lot of these issues are percentage. But when we do the water meter replacement, we actually have to be in the facility, in these locations. We will have a lot better idea, an accurate, so instead of paying twice to go to each location, we're gonna do it as part of the water meter, combine the two.
So you think the $125 is a good number to work with on that?
Yes.
For the next five years, or however many years that is?
Council chair?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Also, there's an infrastructure bill that we might be tapping into, to actually give us money for replacing any lead, anything, any lead pipes. So we're looking at getting grants for that.
Is that the one Councilwoman, I'm not Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Congresswoman Dingle was speaking of yesterday?
Yes. And this is something that we were looking at to get that grant, so we don't have to use our money, use the federal money to replace the lead pipes.
Good.
As, as the mayor indicated, so most of the capital projects that we'll be looking at as part of the capital improvement going forward, will rely mostly on grant or other funding, as opposed to tax revenue.
Nice, yeah.
That's the plan, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
Thank you.
Martin?
Just go ahead.
Does the lost water number include like, you know, bad debt? Let's say 100 residents rack up a water bill and file Chapter 7, and so it's, it's just water loss, not unpaid receivables?
Your water loss. So that number calculates purely the number of units you purchased versus number of units you sold during the time period.
Okay. Go ahead, Martin.
So, like I said, majority of the spend is capital outlay. That's what's really driving the model here, and the overall increases. I do wanna highlight, and, on page four of the assumptions, so it's page four of the main document, the overall projected water and sewer rate increase for the year. So this would be assuming water and sewer rates are approved and are able to be increased effective February 1st, which I realize is a short timeframe. You know, of course, it's a slower usage period for the residents, because you're not watering lawns, lawns or anything like that. And, you know, if you end up making it effective March 1st, it's not gonna have a significant impact to the model. But overall, it's 6.7%, 6.76% water and sewer rate increase versus the past rates. Last year's model was projecting out about 6.9% increase that would occur this year. So it is slightly less, not much, but it is slightly less. And the item that I did wanna highlight overall, what the expected is, what's the expectation is, I guess, when it comes to your overall bills. So the calculation, based on my notes here, the water and sewer rate would increase to $60.75 per 1,000 cubic feet, and sewer rate would increase to $72. What that means to your average monthly bill would increase from approximately $55 to $57.98. So that does see, show an increase of a little bit over $2 for your minimum bill. And then the average bill would increase from about $180, and that's for 1,400 cubic feet that are purchased, to about $192. And that's shown in the letter that we issue to the council separately.
Martin?
Yes?
I'm gonna go back to something that I touched on before. I think you and I discussed it at a very minimal amount of time. And I, I made some notes here for myself. We talked about the capital improvements, say, the water meters. Is the price of the water meter going to be reflected upon how much water someone uses? So if home A uses 1 cubic foot, and home B uses 3 cubic foot, home B is gonna pay more for their water meter than home A?
The way the model works right now, the answer is yes.
And I don't understand why that's done that way.
Yep. So that's the way the model is built right now. The council clearly has an option to do what the council would like, and how you would wanna invoice that. For every $3 million of expenses per year, basically what it changes is about a 1% in your water and sewer rates. So just kinda give you context. The overall debt for the new capital improvement bonds, and that, the capital improvement bonds are shown on page nine at the very top. The overall debt payment is about $1.2, $1.3 million for the full $25 million roughly of bonds, on an annual basis. Portion of that clearly will be for water meters. A portion of it is for some of the other improvements, the CSOs. So if you were gonna segregate out, okay, how much of that is the water meters, you're probably looking at a quarter of that, maybe a little bit less. So you're probably talking about a quarter of a percent change in water and sewer rates. So I'm just, I just wanna make sure that.
And I understand it, but my, my thing is, and I've always been an advocate of this for many years, is that we only, you know, our, our water bills reflect what we use in water and sewage, okay? But the homeowner always thinks they're, they're paying too much for water. What they're really paying for is the whole water system.
Absolutely.
And, and I believe that that should be broken down in a bill that shows them what they're paying for.
I agree.
Because I don't believe one home should pay more for a water meter that costs $1,000, pay more than their next-door neighbor. Because it's still the same water meter, it's still gonna cost the same amount of money to install it, but yet this guy uses more water, because he's got five kids, and this one has only one child. I, I mean, to me, it's not fair. And same with the CSO. I mean, we're paying for, for, for a, a project to upgrade the, the system, but yet I'm gonna be charged more, because I use more water. And I'm, I'm actually in a, in an area that's already half CSO. So now, why should I pay for it? But we, we separate that for the whole city to make it affordable.
Yep.
And, and fair. So I truly believe that, you know, as much work has been done on this, the model should not have reflected of what someone has to pay for a water meter.
No, I completely understand that, and I appreciate that. And, like I said, it's up to the city to decide which method you ultimately you wanna employ. You could do a fixed charge of X per household. The average household probably wouldn't see much of a difference. I think the larger houses would probably see maybe a slightly more, and then the smaller houses, the smaller usage, would probably see an increase. So it's, it's a different school of thought in many communities.
If it's a fixed rate, everybody would pay the same amount, depending on the water meter size. It would be no difference at all. If you've got a three-quarter inch water meter that, like I said, costs $1,000 to purchase and $1,000 to install, it's going to be $2,000. I mean, you get billed six times a year, and you divide that amount, and you're still going to have the cash flow coming into the system. And it's just, to me, a fair way to do it, a transparent way to show people what they're paying for. Because all I know is, and everyone here has heard it, our water rates are too high. I'm paying too much for water. Well, you're paying for a lot more than just water, but should you be paying more for a, more for a specific service, okay? Because you use a little bit more water than a guy down the street for the same service.
Council chair?
You could just go ahead.
I mean, we can go back and we can have, you know, option A and option B, and the council can vote on it, so we can...
You know, that's something I really want to push for because you want to make the cost, and I understand the water, we get increases every year, okay? And it's just like our five-year plan gets thrown out the window every year because, you know, you make a five-year plan and then next year we got to start a new five-year plan. Because water rates always go up and nobody's, nobody can really tell me what next year's water rate's going to be, percentage-wise, okay? There may be a catastrophic situation that happens at the treatment plant. So, but I think everybody should be treated fairly and pay the same amount of money. Person that lives on Doc Stater, for instance, is going to, pays more money to pick up his trash than a guy that lives on Fairwood Street. Why? That's my big thing is why? It's the same garbage truck, same garbage can, same water, same sewage. So I'd like to see everybody have something.
So maybe the mayor's administration can bring something forward, and we could look at the two options and then decide from there.
And I believe a study session would be very good for that.
We can do a study session, I have no problem with that. We, I do want to point out to all you guys that we have about maybe 25, 35 minutes left, so just keep that in mind with the questions. But just, so now, I always like to not sum it up, but address it to the average Joe public that does not deal with 3,000 billion numbers all over the place. So they're, you know, they may or may not be aware.
There's only 2,000 billion.
So now, back to just Joe public looking at this, and they're going to be looking at their water bill that had, the current rates on average for a bi-monthly bill is about $180. And bi-monthly, the new proposed rate is going to go to about 191 roughly. So based on that, then the average bill is going to go up about $5,050, maybe $6 per month. The only reason I'm saying that is because sometimes when we throw around a lot of numbers, then people lose touch as far as what it is specifically we're addressing. At this particular point, the increase is roughly $5.50, $6 per average household per month, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What is the primary reason for the increases? Because like Councilman Ray Muscat mentioned, is people are always mentioning our water bills are going up too high, our water bills are too high, our water bills are too high. And, you know, we're voting for too much increases. Well, if we accept this particular proposal today as council members, the proposal is basically to raise the water bill by $5,050 per 30 days. Now, we could reduce it to ridiculous, take it over 30 days, it's even crazier. What is the primary purpose for the increases? Is it just based on the Great Lakes Water Association giving us that type of an increase? Or what is the primary purpose for the increase?
So GLIWAT would be an increase, they're projecting about 4%.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, misspoke using the acronym earlier. So GLIWAT is about 4% per year, and historically, the last few years, they've kept to their word and everything, so it has been much more in check versus prior years. So I feel that, you know, pretty strongly that should be, it should come through. Then the other big component is purely the capital outlay. The improvements that you're projecting within the city over the next five years are very significant.
Okay. And if I, if I could interrupt you again for a sec. So again, I like it for the residents to understand it at their level. So for the residents that are watching this or in the audience, please describe in a brief, briefly, what capital outlay is for them.
So capital outlay is purely fixed asset purchases, so water main replacement, the CSO corrections that you're planning on doing, the water meter purchases. So those consume majority of those improvements. Then you also have expenses associated with sewer lining, those are projected per year X amount of dollars. Those collectively represent a significant number of dollars basically in this budget. I believe over the next couple of years, it's about 35 to 40 million dollars. So that's why the overall increase is projected at 6.7, 6.8%.
Okay. Next quick question. What if we, as a council body, decided, okay, you know what, we're not going to have any more increases for our water bills, and hypothetically, we rejected this, $5 and some, and 50 cents on average, per average household? Let's say hypothetically, we turned this down. What would then happen? What is the potential risk?
So the potential risk is you will deplete your cash, your cash balance, or you don't make the improvements. So if you don't make the improvements, you're going to have more water loss, so that 11% will likely keep multiplying over. So you're going to have bigger water loss, you're going to have bigger increased costs as a result. You're, or if you make the improvements, your cash is going to be depleted, and you're either going to have to borrow more cash to sustain the fund, and you're ultimately going to have to increase the water rates by much more significant dollar amounts.
Which means ultimately, the residents would eventually pay for it in one way, one form or another.
That's correct.
Director Deeb, you had, go ahead, Director Deeb, if you don't mind. Thank you, Martin.
Please keep in mind the options. So we have made commitments to Eagle. The reason for selling the bonds was to address the CSO situation. We have agreed to a timeline and a number of projects with Eagle, and they are watching us. I mean, they gave us until 2025. All three CSOs have to be separated. We did one, we have two more. So the cost that you're talking about is part of the bonds that we sold, and we have that money dedicated for these projects. It isn't just the water meter. That's one of the list of projects that we are operating under consent judgment.
Okay.
Just keep that in mind.
So are you saying that we have to do it?
Yes, yes, yes. Those two, the CSOs, absolutely, yes.
What would have been the increases in the last few years, say, three or four years?
There's been, I would say it's always hovering between like 6 or 7%.
6% on that ball bar.
It's actually on that page four.
So I got a question, and I don't know who can answer this, maybe Ali Deeb, maybe the mayor, maybe Ray, maybe Martin.
My next door neighbor keeps telling me every, you know, 30 days, "Moby, why am I paying so much money for water?" And I tell him, "It's going to be lower next month." Because literally, that's what I tell him. "Next month, don't use too much water. I promise you it's going to be less." And he'll laugh it off, but he's dead serious and says, "I may have come from..." And I always give the argument, who, you know, he came from Dearborn. And I say, "But you pay more money in taxes. I'm giving you a little bit of a higher water rate, but you're not paying as much in taxes." And that's always an argument, because he pays less taxes in Dearborn Heights than he does in Dearborn. But the person living on Doc Stater tells me, you know, "I pay $20,000 in taxes and I got a $500 water bill every month. Why is my water bill always so high?" What is, what can I tell him that we're going to try to do to either A, lower that water bill, or B, hey, listen, we got an aging infrastructure? And until we can fix every pipe in the city, which we probably are not going to be able to do in the next 10, 15 years, until that is all completely done, there's no way of lowering your water bill. You're going to have to eat up a $500 increase.
Can I speak, please?
Council chair?
So I completely understand that, and to be honest, I hear that in every community I speak with and that I work with, everybody says they have the highest water bill. My answer is, that's not right because I have the highest water bill. But in all honesty, it is, at the end of the day, it's very hard to compare community to community because various communities build differently, they have different fixed charges. There's many communities that have property taxes that pay for various bonds within water and sewer funds. So an individual that pays water and sewer bill here in the city of Dearborn Heights, we don't have a property tax that pays for your capital improvements. I know this happened many years ago, but you don't have that anymore. So basically, all the debt that's within the water and sewer fund, all the capital improvements, et cetera, are purely funded by water and sewer rates. There's communities, and I don't know offhand which ones, but they have capital bonds that are purely paid by property taxes. So you strip away all those debt payments from your budget, and all of a sudden, guess what? Your water and sewer rebuild goes down. But the resident doesn't see or forgets the fact that when they pay their property taxes, the property taxes are higher. As you mentioned, you know, if someone compares to a different city, their property taxes are much higher as a result of paying for a lot of those bonds on their property tax bill.
You know what? I can't wait to use that tomorrow.
You know, but you know, this is where I get back to my point of if we put on our water meter, our bills, what we actually pay, I think the residents can better adjust to it, knowing that, you know, out of the $500 two-month water bill, that 175...
Sort of breakdown of the percentages?
Yeah, 175 is going toward a CSO that we have to do. We just didn't decide that, hey, we're going to do this. This is something that was mandated by the state to do. We need new water meters, so this is what it's costing you. So people can accept...
More detailed transaction.
Yeah, so people can accept the fact, okay, so my water, I'm not really paying that much for water, but if, again, but if we incorporate the price of a water meter into the amount that you're going to use, that's wrong. That's, that is, to me, it's totally, it's not right. It's just buying a car and then have to pay an extra for a steering wheel.
Okay. So Mayor, maybe you could look into it with the administration if that can be maybe clarified on the water bills. It'd have to be a percentage, obviously. But where the, the percentages on the water, what percent goes towards what? If it can be done on the water bill. Do you have something to add, Mr. Mayor?
Actually, thank you, Council Chair. I was going to make a comment, but Council Chair Protem already mentioned, this is something is mandated by the state, obviously. And, you know, one of the biggest things, I mean, we cannot say, don't say that statement, hey, you know, your water bill is going to be better next time because you might be taking longer showers, leaving the water.
This is my very close friend, it's a neighbor.
No, I understand, but I just want to make sure, don't, we can't make that statement. And the reason why is because if the bill is, comes in as a, if it's, if they're reading the water meters, this is an actual read, this is the water usage that they're using. So when we replace all the water meters, it's going to resolve a lot of issues. Because every, every business, every house will have the new water meters, and we're getting state-of-the-art water meters. This is something that we're doing right now. We're doing an assessment because we want to be able to read the water meters periodically. And some of the stuff that we've had some concerns with in the past, I know real estate agents will actually appreciate this, when they close on a house, they have to get an actual water meter reading, and sometimes you have to wait days.
No, no, weeks.
Weeks, oh, well.
Months.
So we're trying to prevent that. We're trying to actually improve that part by, anybody can go in and say, hey, you know, I'm selling my house, I need an actual read, within a few seconds, they can actually pull it up. So this is some, this is one of the...
When should residents expect the new water meters to be put in, Mr. Mayor?
Well, we're working on the process right now, trying to figure out where we're going to put sensors, you know, throughout the city. So we're locating to see where they have to be placed.
But approximately, like when?
Well, I know, Mr. Deeb...
Mr. Deeb, when would residents expect the new meters to be put in roughly?
So what we're doing to currently, and we just set up the second demonstration, we're looking at the best available technology that our staff can use. As the mayor indicated, we're looking for state-of-the-art equipment, wireless instant reading capabilities, and then collectors. So that got us into how many collectors we need, antennas, you know, cell towers, use those to collect the signals, and then process it. We set up one demonstration already in December, we have two coming up this month, actually. Two, the top three water meter manufacturers are presenting, and then our staff, all our staff, the DPW, the people in accounting, you know, everyone, to look at that and make sure they select the product that we have to live with for the next 100 years.
But if you had to pick a rough date, are we talking about the end of the year or next year?
End of the year.
By the end of the year, this should be up. Okay, thank you.
It's going to be phased, so it's not the entire city overnight, obviously, but it's going to be phased. So ideally, what you'll have is like one location, we'll set up the collector and then start phasing them out.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mr. Deeb, so, Mr. Deeb, I have a question. So those collectors and service, all this stuff you're talking about, are they included in the cost of the water meter? That's an extra cost on us.
Okay, so they are extra, but the project funding, the 9 million that was part of the 25 that was set up three years ago, I wasn't involved in that number, the estimate, but we're trying to live with, within that number. So as the mayor indicated, the policy we have is to all capital projects, and that's, that will, you know, again, help our bottom line. The reason our rates are high is because we've put all these expenses into it, which is where they belong, water sewers. But if you have a capital program that you fund separately, these costs will go into the program, not into the operating rate. And that's our, going forward, that's our plan.
So since we're going to be all like high-tech with the water reads and stuff, so we don't have to send anybody anymore to collect the water reads, is that going to save us money in a long time, like instead of having somebody going around and collecting, you know, finding water reads and/or water reads?
Well, that department, we all know, it's short-staffed. So the people that we have currently, we would have to obviously train, you know, with the new water meters. So we would still use the same staff to do the repairs of need-to on the water meters, and also they'd be doing the readings and everything else. So the process is going to be a lot better. And one of the things that I was going to actually mention is, we were looking at this neighboring city that had water meters, so we were fixated on this city what they had. But all of a sudden, that city actually updated to something what we want. So this, the technologies, even this one city we looked at, it's already changed their water meters twice in the last, what, like five years or so? It's because they found something better, and that's what we're looking at, something better. So we're, we benchmark, and we're going best-in-class water meters, and this is something that we're looking at.
I just thought, you know, I was made aware that the city of Lincoln Park has a 39% water loss. That's pretty high. I mean, I guess we're kind of lucky, but we should get down. Couple things is, every year, we, you know, we get increases for our water use, what we pay for water. And the first question, don't answer it, is what can we do on our end to offset that increase without increasing the water bill? And second one, the water cost compared to water treatment?
So you're, okay, you touched up on something really critical, that the large percentage increases, to my knowledge, is not in the cost of the commodity, it's in the treatment processes. And we are currently working with our two treatment facilities, the south and the north. On the south end, DUA is going through a process where they're looking at the, all the communities that discharge sewers into Detroit Down River Utility Waste Water Authority, and trying to redo the model, the cost-sharing methodology. Because you are, we are part of 14 communities, right? And then, and then, we don't, we don't meter our sewers. Our sewers are based on your water sales, so they bill us based on how much water we sold. And then they work that number. Now, in addition to the water sales, they also have what they call the water, the rest, so they measure the sewers at the plant, and that measurement is then divided among the communities based on percentages. We're currently looking at a totally different model, and we have been going back and forth this Friday, it was like half the day, going on methodology to see what we can do. Seven, six or seven, I'm going to say six, communities have already, out of the 14, put sewer meters on them, on their sewers. So they can actually measure how much sewers are going out of the community, and they pay based on that measurement.
That'd be great, you know, because we're watering lawns, things of that nature, right? You would charge as much for it.
So part of the methodology that we're looking at now is to, don't report all of our water sales throughout the year. We're looking at a average winter use. So we will only report the winter use and take that average until we have, until we have enough time to actually go and put meters in place. You know, to put meters in place, you also have to keep in mind that meters will require maintenance and will require, you know, capital expenditures or will require other things. So we have to balance the two. Is it better to put meters or can we just use a winter average? I've got these, the operators to agree to winter average now, so by next year, '23, we will use winter average, just the three months of the winter, and then forget all the readings in the summer. So we'll just take that one time, average winter use, and base our discharge on that number.
Would we be seeing lower water rates in that case?
Pardon me?
Would we be seeing lower water rates in that case?
Treatment, no.
Theoretically, yes.
Ali, if we spend $1 worth of, we get $1 worth of water, how much is it costing us for, to treat that $1 worth of water, roughly?
Four, three to four. Three to four.
Three to four times?
Dollars.
So it's going to be $3 or $4 to treat $1 worth of water?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's expensive. And you keep in mind, you have two facilities. So the Down River is different than the Rouge Valley, which is Wayne County.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb. Now, we're going to allow for questions at the end, for those in the audience, and then those I know online, I think there's some questions online, on Zoom, I'm sorry, on the Zoom meeting. Mr. Mayor, you want, you, I hope you said something.
No, actually, what I wanted to say is, when they were talking about the treatment, you know, one of the biggest things right now we're having issues with that is costing most money, more money, is the 14 communities Mr. Deeb mentioned, is that people putting sanitary wipes, you know, flushing down the toilet. So they say flushable wipes. So those are costs against money because it's, they're, it's causing issues at the treatment center with pumps, and, you know, they have to process that. So this is a huge problem.
Yeah, if you ever get a chance, and I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Deeb can maybe arrange for some of the council members to do this. I know myself, Councilman Ray Muscat, I think Councilman Robert Conston, some of the previous council members also, we went and did a tour of the water treatment plan. Boy, is that interesting. It's a little different than Greenfield Village, I'll tell you that.
Make sure you wear like triple masks.
Yeah, yeah, definitely wear a mask.
Triple.
And some...
Triple.
And somebody like me that's OCD, that was a little special going through that particular treatment plant, but it's some interesting, maybe Mr. Deep can maybe make arrangements for some of the newer council members if they'd like to take a tour of that plant and wind off, if I'm not mistaken, on the river. Very interesting, if nothing else. At least it'll give you a different perspective as far as what we're dealing with. Okay, so what I'm going to do, Martin, I'm going to give you another, if you don't mind, five minutes, as far as whatever you got left in your presentation. If somebody doesn't have an urgent question, let's try to avoid asking it. Then I'm going to give another five minutes, whoever's online, if they have whatever questions, Madam Clerk. And then after that, I see the other gentleman from Plant Moran. Is this in regards to the walk-on?
Council Chair, this is Brian Kemmler. It's actually, we're, we're going to be discussing the one that I'm hoping you guys put on the agenda.
So I'm saying, is he going to be, did you want him to discuss something here, or are you talking about during the meeting?
Well, it'd be nice to, if we can discuss it before, I'd want him to wait two hours till the end of the meeting for, to put this on the agenda.
Okay, so then, then to respect the time, and then to be able to finish on time, we'll do five minutes with Martin.
I only need about a minute, so--
Okay, beautiful. And then we'll do about three to five minutes, or three to six minutes with whoever's online, if they have any Zoom questions. And then after that, we'll go ahead and, go ahead with you, and then after that, we'll, we'll be breaking at 20 minutes to 7:00 sharp. Go ahead.
So, real quick, we talked about the rates, the impact, et cetera. In the past, the last couple of years, this presentation was done earlier in the year, probably August, September timing. I would recommend looking at that again, as you're, as Brian Kemmler, PM Gap is going to come in and help out with the finances, accounting, et cetera. You'll have cleaner records, faster records, faster accounting information. So I would recommend doing the same kind of thing, you know, six months from now, seven months from now, so you can see where you stand, where everything kind of starts shaking out--
Continue, Mrs. Hassan.
--as projects are being quoted. So that would be my overall recommendation.
Whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Right now, looking at the rate increases, like I said, the 6.7 roughly percent is projected to go in February 1st, maybe March 1st. I would recommend doing that, because if you don't, the increases likely in the future are going to be higher as a result. So that's my biggest concern, so.
Martin, one thing for me, I've never argued with your, your forecast, it's just the way it's presented to the public on their bills, that's all.
Completely understand, I appreciate--
And that's strictly up to us and not to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, one last thing, Martin, I noticed on this, it's really only through June, this, this coming June, correct?
So it's always, so it's through this June, but it's also, it has the projection for the next five years, every June 30. So it's based on your fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else have any questions for Martin? Councilwoman Nancy Barr?
Yeah, on page four, there's a reference to the Ecorse Creek area. Is that in addition to the other charges, that percentage?
On page, which?
Page four of this--
Page four.
Yes, so it's all, so it's built into the full model, and so it is separated in here, but technically, it's already into that 6.7%. So it's not extra and above and beyond or anything like that.
And Martin, so we have what I'll call the wholesale rate from the Great Lakes Water Authority, and then the add-ons for the, the final bill that the customer gets, the bulk of those add-ons are for capital improvements that the city costs?
The current breakdown on the water and sewer bill, or--
So that, so we get the wholesale rate. It used to be, before they regionalized the system, it was always City of Detroit. All the communities would say, oh, the City of Detroit, they sent us a big increase. So now that it's regionalized, you have the wholesale rate from Great Lakes Water Authority, and then the bulk of the additional charges that come from the City of Dearborn Heights, those are for our capital improvements? Is that a fair way to summarize it?
For the expenses, yes. So there is, so there's a component of the increase is based on the LEWAP purchases. So that, the water rate increase from that is approximately 4% projection for next year and the future years, because it's every year 4% increase, it's not just one year. And then the other, the component, you're absolutely correct, is the capital infrastructure within the city.
And then things like the levies for, you know, the, the two consent judgments, the one's gone, and those should be going away.
Yeah, so the property tax, the, what's called like the over levy over the years, that is actually built into the model to be completely consumed in your first debt payment on those 2021 water and sewer bonds. So your first payment is $4.5 million, something like that. Majority of that is from that over levy, and then you still have to make up some difference, but that is consumed all within the first year.
Okay, thank you, Martin. So before we, oh, Councilman--
I have a question on the Part C on the report. Do you have it?
Yes.
Where it says finding all amounts were in agreement after adjusting for the water volumes included in annual unbilled water receivable calculation. Can you clarify that, please?
Yes, so, so these kind of list out all, overall, our procedures that we did, and this one in particular, it talks about not only the water usage that you had, but also there's unbilled components. So in order, I believe the last bill came out, like, let's just say, May, then there's a month of unbilled, so that's actually included in this calculation as well. Because the next bill doesn't come out, I believe, until end of July, so a portion of it has to relate to the previous year. So that's kind of the, in the calculation here. But all the units used are included in the model.
So how come they're unbilled? Or, I mean, by, like, I mean, because they're going every two months?
Yeah, so since you bill every two months, some bills go out not necessarily as of June 30. So at that point in time, it's actually treated as unbilled because you haven't sent the invoice out to the customer yet.
Okay.
So what ends up happening is, for accounting language, it's just called unbilled, but technically, that water has already been used by the customer.
Thank you very much.
Okay, super quick--
Super quick, just kudos, Martin. Thank you so much, we appreciate you. I love how quick you are on your toes when a question is asked. Like, hey, real quick, on this line item C, and you're just like, I like, I respect it. Quick on your toes, you do your homework.
Yes, he does. Riverside Training, right?
Absolutely. Not a charger, but he's all right.
Okay, so--
That was middle school, I did go to Crestwood.
Did you?
Yes.
I love you no more.
Says a charger.
Is he?
So, Madam Clerk, can you let on whoever's on Zoom if they have, well, I'm sorry, before we go to Zoom, is there anybody in the audience that has any question? One, twice, nobody? Great. So we're going to, Councilman Tom, I guess. Madam Clerk, can you let on whoever's got questions on Zoom? And for those on Zoom, we're going to limit it to two to three minutes, please, because we're very, very limited on time. We have another presentation, and then a little mini-break, and then the next, the next council meeting. So we're limited on time.
Okay, Director Jamal is--
Who do you have, I'm sorry?
Director Jamal.
Okay, Director Jamal, go ahead.
Yeah, good, good evening. I don't know--
One second.
I know, I agree with you, you're letting the--
One second.
The ones in the audience--
One second.
--speak before, that's okay. I have a comment regarding this water budget.
I don't think he's here or not.
Do you hear me?
That was the easiest question of the night.
Yeah.
Okay, now, again, this model--
We have a technical--
--that presented today--
Madam Clerk, can we go, is there anybody else that has a question? Maybe we'll go to the next person and see if they're able to, okay, Hassan?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can't hear you. You gotta unmute yourself.
Can we try somebody else to see if it's maybe the--
That's what I was saying, but there's nobody else.
Well, I am, I am unmuted, I don't know why you don't hear me.
I can ask Deputy Clerk to, she's on here.
Yeah, have anybody just call in, just in case.
I mean, I can, I can call--
Can you unmute yourself, Hassan?
Speaker, I am, I am on my, I am in my office.
Can you hear me, Lynn?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I don't, they can hear us.
So what's the problem with--
Lynn, can you hear me? You can't hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Well, she's on. Kathy, can you hear us?
I can, I can hear, yes, I can hear you, but you can't hear--
I am unmuted, I did unmute myself.
Wait, Kathy, talk again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Go ahead and say some. No, we can't hear.
They're coming from there.
Can you hear me now?
It's on the computer, okay, but the audience can't hear you, so, you know what, Hassan, ask your question, ask your question.
Over.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead, Hassan.
Okay, is, I am on?
Barely, but we need a quick question.
Okay, do you hear me now?
Lightly, but go ahead.
Well, how about now? Yes.
It's not, this is the best it's going to be for right now, go ahead, Hassan.
My microphone on my computer.
Okay, because it's, the problem is with, with your microphone at the school, not with me. But anyway, you know, in a layman language, right now, the whole proposal is based on the water usage, which not a fair measurement for the water rate, which include capital investment, that it's going to be covered by about $18 million, you know, of grant. I recommend that the water and sewage rate being separated, you know, with the maintenance of the system, our, our water rate can be presented fairly to the, to the resident of Dearborn Heights, and it can be probably most likely about 40% to 50% less. So the people know what's the true rate for their cost of the water in the sewer system, plus maintenance. Now, the capital investment can be actually fairly, you know, ask the, ask the resident 25,000 or 24,000 houses to pay. If we have million, million point two to pay the bond, we divide that by 24,000, that's how much you pay every two months.
Okay.
Period.
Thank you, Hassan.
You don't need to, to, to explain to resident, to the residents, a model which is built for cash flow. We are not looking anymore for cash flow. We are not borrowing from the waterfront to cover the city shortfall of cash flow. The city is in good shape for cash flow. We have about $6 million. We need to build a models transparent to the resident that we are a new, we are a new vision for the city. We are a new administration--
Hassan, we're limited on time, I apologize, but I have to cut you off. You want to finish your sentence? You all sat?
Yes, I can finish my sentence, you know, in three, in three seconds. So I recommend the city council to, to, to actually, you know, recommend to Plant Moran to give us a model where the capital investments are separate, and we will fund it as we can from the grant, which we have tons of money coming.
Okay, thank you, Hassan Jamal. Was there any other questions on Zoom?
No.
Okay, so thank you for those on Zoom. So now we're going to have, there's a walk-on item that the mayor feels is necessary to put on today's council meeting, but before we do, we have the gentleman from Plant Moran that's going to, I'm not sure exactly what specifically, but the mayor is more familiar.
Yes.
So, go ahead, come on up. So we have a total of around four minutes, if you don't mind. So give us at least a briefing of what it is that you want to present.
Yes, so no change to our proposal from the last time that I was here speaking with you. Last time I was here, council approved us, with the understanding, though, that we would finalize the, excuse me, the negotiation through the corporate council. And so for the past two weeks, we've, I think we've come to a compromise, where two of the three suggestions that Mr. Miyake made have been incorporated. I've signed the addendum to the engagement letter that includes two of those three, sent it back for signature. So assuming council is satisfied, then the mayor can sign the engagement letter, and we can begin working immediately.
Which part was it that you were not able to approve?
There's fine print in our terms and conditions related to indemnification, and my legal counsel would not allow any changes to that language, but it's the same language that 70 other communities in Michigan approved last year.
Okay, so based on that particular language, did our counselor Gary Miyake approve it?
He is not in favor of that term, but like I said, two out of three, we, I would agree on.
Okay, so obviously, we'll be able to ask him during the regular council meeting. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I'll let Gary explain it, just, can you give us a brief about it? Lot of the, lot of the, lot of contracts, they have a provision. So a person from Plant Moran is here at, at City of Dearborn Heights, that person gets sued, and Plant Moran gets sued, we promise that we will indemnify and hold Plant Moran harmless. Let's say there's a group of people that, but they sent us a certificate of insurance showing they have a lot of insurance, so--
In case there's a lawsuit.
Yes. The chance of this happening are, I'd say like 1 in 1,000.
Right, but I would, I would still feel personally, at least, not speaking on behalf of the body, more comfortable having our attorney let us know that he's comfortable enough with it. I'm sure the mayor is comfortable with it, otherwise he wouldn't have brought it forward, but either way, I would still like to hear from our counselor. Was there, did anybody else have any questions for the gentleman?